This is a call to order the September 1st, 2021 regular meeting of the Duck Town Council. And at this time, I'd like to ask firefighter Jake Dempsey, soon to be Captain Jake Dempsey, if he'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the re-ality for which this stands, my nation and our land, indivisible, with their dignity and justice.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. This time, we're going to go to item number two, public comments. If anyone would like to address the council this evening, please step forward to the podium. Please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. We do have one comment that our PIO, Christian Lugner, is going to read.
The following comment that I'm going to read was pretty much similar across multiple emails that were received at the council meeting at townofduck.com email address. So I've listed all of the names and I will read the most complete email. The council members all have copies of all of the emails. So I'll start with the names. There are 29 names that will be attached to this next comment that I make. John Park, 109 Waxwing Lane. Stephen Thuer. Kevin and Miriam Robertson, 117 Waxwing. Tim and Lori Rose, 101 Virio. David Ryden. Jane Dowrick, 102 Blue Heron. A.J. Johnson, 111 Royal Turn. Nancy and Thomas Goodrich. Kristen Roundtree. Lex Wolf. Karen Thomas. Jim O'Neil, 107 Royal Turn. Robert Harris. Joel and Marcia Wilson. Kevin and Kathleen Wright, 112 Quail Way. Bob and Margie Farmer, 102 Ready Duck Lane. Tony and Nancy Perizzi. David Smiley. Jack Moreland, 108 Royal Turn. David and Donna Gearhart, 114 Blue Heron. Sandra Hughes Harrison, 102 Waxwing. Melanie Sterling, 102 Blue Heron. Ray Falchion. Heidi Gillis, 119 Virio. William Pilot, Sanderling. Richard and Ellen Enderly, 125 Martin Lane. Lou Fidel, 1532 Duck Road. Jay Blows, 105 Waxwing. And Richard Herb, 113 Waxwing. Town of Duck council members and Town of Duck, I'm writing as a property owner in Northern Duck to ask that the town council terminate the current test of the blue root, yellow root trash removal concept and reinstate the previous schedule of Monday and Friday services that align recycling services with trash services for the entire town. All residents and property owners in Duck deserve the same quality of service, whether it is for trash, recycling, or any other service provided by the Town of Duck, which is paid for by our taxes. The current schedule clearly treats Northern Duck differently and far less favorably than Southern Duck. I note that the majority of town council members live in Southern Duck and may not have had to deal with the unpleasant lesser experience that now occurs in Northern Duck. The current program has been dubious from the start. The survey supporting the trial schedule failed to stress the fact that the trash and recycling services would not be the same for both Northern and Southern Duck, which may have led to inaccurate results. Information about the test schedule did not include any mention of how recycling services would be affected and that half the town would have receptacles sitting out at the street for at least three days a week, while the other half would have them out two days as in the past. Further, the trial was supposed to be a summer program, but when the town made the post-survey announcement, it additionally included changes to the off-season schedule. The current scheme seems to be blind to the existing traffic patterns on Route 12. The decision to give the yellow root North Duck a new schedule has contributed to worsening traffic congestion on Duck Road. Traffic now has to deal with truck slowdowns and obstructions for trash and recycling vehicles three days each week instead of just two. There are more than 80 properties with receptacles sitting at the roadside five days a week, with rollout on one day and rollback on another, creating major traffic disruption on Duck Road. Also seemingly ignored is the resultant stench and animal infestation created by full trash bins being pulled out early on Sundays and then baking in the sun until they are emptied two days later on Tuesdays instead of Monday. It is time to return to a synchronized trash and recycling schedule that is focused on both the provision of excellent and equitable service for all of Duck's property owners and visiting population, while working to reduce traffic congestion on Duck Road, as well as sanitation issues. The Town of Duck should be able to stipulate the terms of service expected of its sanitation service vendors in their service solicitations, rather than merely accepting what may or may not be offered. This circumstance doesn't seem to be an issue in other adjacent towns. And that's the end. And as I said, they were all materially similar, but you have full copies of every single email that was sent. Thank you.
Thank you, Christian. Thank you to all that wrote in your comments. Would anyone else like to address the council this evening? There being no one, we'll close public comments. We're going to move on to item number three, consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening contains some minutes from the July 7th, 2021 regular meeting. Budget amendment number one and ratified contract with DHB for traffic study work and a budget amendment number two to cover full year 2021 encumbrances. Well, that'll entertain a motion. Any discussion of the motion on the floor? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes five to zero. Moving on to item number four, special presentations. At this time, I'd like to ask town manager Drew Havens if he would take the podium.
Thank you, Mayor Kingston, members of council. Good evening. Ms. Barnes, could you join me up here, just so everybody can see you? It's my pleasure to introduce you tonight to Jessica Barnes, who is our new finance and human resources administrator. Jessica started today, so her first day gets to be a real long one. I promised her that most days aren't this long. Jessica is originally from Virginia Beach, Virginia, and moved to Camden, North Carolina in 2015 after meeting her husband Kyle. Together, they share two little boys, Lucas, who's five, and Jacob, who is almost two years old, getting into the terrible twos. That's awesome. Jessica has several years of finance and administrative experience, most recently with the Town of Kitty Hawk, where she worked in the finance department. She is certified in QuickBooks, which is our financial software, and is currently attending the College of the Albemarle for a degree in business administration. When not working her in school, she's usually spending time with her family or working on craft projects. She's looking forward to furthering her career in local government here in the Town of Duck. And please join me in welcoming Jessica Barnes. Then Chief Black is going to take care of the introductions of the members of her team.
Welcome, Jessica.
Thank you. Very happy to have you. Good evening, council, community, and those watching via YouTube. Jessica, welcome to the Town of Duck. Tonight, I have the privilege of rounding out what I've been working on for a couple of years with council, so I'll start with thank you. It takes a village to protect a village. In 1982, Duck Fire was incorporated, and it was a group of locals in the village that recognized the need to have a presence of fire in town and not just through the greater kind of northern outer banks, if you will. So Duck Fire was incorporated July 13th, 1982. We also recognize that takes a village to create a town, and in 2002, we incorporated town. You fast forward to 2021, and our village looks a little different, and how we do business is a little bit different, which has gotten us to our point right now where we have a combination department. We can't just do it with volunteers. I think tonight rounds out a almost 40-year process to get us to what I think will be sustainable for the near future, and I know you all are glad to hear me not talk about him. Proud of him, very excited to have him. And Dempsey will now help me with our introductions to our new firefighters. So you all were very helpful November of last year in recognizing a need in bringing on one position. We had a young man that was here for a few months, who then decided to try other things in California, so we had an opening. So we filled that opening with Dave Seibert, and you might know him as Christian's husband as well. So I'm going to have Dave step up with Christian. So Dave came to me well over a year ago and asked some questions. I met with him and Christian a couple times because he's like, I think I want to be a firefighter. He has a master's degree in geological sciences. He worked at Coastal Studies Institute and then decided, in his late 30s, he wanted to be a firefighter. Dave came to us with zero experience, but he did come to us with determination. So we had him join as a volunteer, and Dave went through the entire firefighter program in a year. That's almost impossible. It's a lot of hours, while he had a job, while he had a side job, while he coached lacrosse. And there was some doubting members that he could do it all in a year, and he did it. And he went through our process, and he came out on top in that round in the spring. So we don't have a lot of time tonight, so I'm not going to read everything about all three, but what I did ask them to do is to give me three words to describe themselves to give to you. So Dave gave me these three words: determined, loyal, easygoing. So when you look at what we're looking for in the folks that are going to be at our firehouse every third day and in your community every third day, I think those fit. Welcome, Dave. All right, now we'll have Erin Thomas, soon to be Erin Gray, so come on up. So after you approved the other two positions, we put it out, and we had a group of folks come in to do our physical agility test, which you have to pass first and then go through interviews. And Erin was one of those candidates that made it all the way through and is now going to be a town employee for us. Very excited. She comes to us from York County, where she worked fire and EMS already. Interestingly, about 10 years ago, she did it, then went off to get her degree and do other things, but she found her way back to York County and doing it again. So she knows this is her calling. What stood out for me in the interview was like, why do you want to come to Duck? She's working in a larger organization in Virginia, and she said she wants to get back to something more small town, where everyone knows your name and you kind of get to know the community. I'm like, ding, 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 that's a perfect fit for the Town of Duck. So Erin comes to us from York County. I know she's committed, that they already bought a house. Her fiance, John, they're getting married a few days after Jake is. So please welcome Erin, but before we do that, I'll give you her three words: ambitious, adventurous, compassionate. And the fact they found a house in this market so quickly in Currytuck County, I think she's committed to us, and we welcome you both to the Duck Fire family. Greg's family couldn't be with him tonight. I guess a bad day at school for the kids. But Greg is a local. He comes to us from Roanoke Island, that's where he lives. He's a volunteer in Roanoke Island, and our previous deputy chief is the chief over there, so you know he has a good foundation coming to us. But he also decided to make a career change. He was with Dare County. He was their, what's your official title? Turf maintenance?
Superintendent.
Superintendent for Dare County. So he's left the county to come work for the Town of Duck in this role. He's energetic. He was in the interview. He has some experience with emergency operations in the past. He actually has been deployed several times as a heavy equipment operator. He loves the emergency management side of what was his kind of turf, public works job. So I love that he comes with that energy as well as wanting to be a firefighter. So his three words: loyal, fun-loving, and genuine. And again, values that I think we all want for our community and our fire department. So please help me in welcoming Greg Fiala. So I'll leave you with a thank you for getting us to this point. I'll talk a little bit more about what this looks like operationally in my presentation later, but we still need volunteers. This will always be a combination department. This helps us with that immediate response, but I'll be pushing out information over the next few months. Our census is different, and I hope that we can continue to find more people interested. I know Ralph's here, one of our number one volunteers. We still want that portion, so thank you for the opportunity here to fill this out and look forward to working with all of them. They officially start tomorrow at 7:30 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations again, Jake, and welcome to Dave, Erin, and Greg. Glad to have you on the town.
You're welcome.
The next item is going to be a discussion about NC Coastal Federation Pelican Award. I think Christian and Sandy Cross are going to handle it.
So apparently, when you have a great community, good things happen and you get awards. Just a little history about how this came to be and why we got this award. Last year, we initiated Duck Sweep, kind of as a pilot project. That was just our litter cleanup. And a young woman by the name of Leslie Vegas, who works for Coastal Federation, came to give us a presentation. Well, Christian knows Leslie from five-minute cleanups, beach cleanups. So she helped us with some of our soundside cleanups and getting prizes and stuff that we could give to our volunteers when they came out to help. Leslie came and gave us a presentation about the restaurateur reef initiative. It's actually a state requirement that restaurants recycle their oysters. Unfortunately, the state doesn't have any money for it, so NC Coastal Federation is trying to promote it. And with our help, we were able to initiate the program here in Duck. We solicited all the restaurants that provide oysters, and as a result, and let me just backtrack, Allison was here then. She was a big help in this as well, as well as Leslie. We got roadside onboard. We got Village Table and Tavern in NC Coast. Roadside and Tavern were delivering their oysters here to the park. We were picking up oysters from NC Coast that has since ceased. But the end result was, we were able to provide a large number of oysters and deliver them down to Jockey's Ridge with staff assistance. We have since received some money from NC Coastal Federation to actually put a platform at the park with some information so people can see what we are doing. And our plan is to pick it back up this fall with roadside and tavern and try to work with some of the other restaurants, if they carry oysters, to continue the project. We do expect the work that will continue will be assisted with volunteers from Coastal Federation and maybe some volunteers from Duck. But because we did that, coupled with our soundside cleanups and our litter sweep and our, hopefully soon to be, Living Shoreline up by Sunset Grill, they nominated us for a Pelican Award, and it was a great event that hopefully we will be invited back to again, and I will let Christian segue into how we're going to do that.
You know, Sandy and I are always looking for more and more and more and more, because that's who we are. But some of the things that we're working on is, we're trying to work with NC DOT to really formalize our Duck Sweep with Adopt a Highway. As I've mentioned before, with the Jazz Festival, we do expect that the Jazz Festival, when we have it next year, will be green travel certified by the state. And then in 2018, if you guys remember, there was a resolution supporting the Plastic Ocean Project and the ocean-friendly establishments in Duck. And we talked about that with some of our local businesses, but there was not a local representative for that program at the time. There is now a local representative that can travel to businesses and talk about sustainable methods to get their ocean-friendly establishment certificate, so we really hope this winter to start getting that moving again, too. So lots of, lots of green things on the horizon. And I did, if you want to look at it when we're done tonight, we were also featured in Our Coast magazine, which is the publication from the Coastal Federation, and they featured all the winners here. And then I think we have a quick photo op. Mr. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind. And thank you to the council for letting Sandy and I run off on these well, these chases. We really love it.
Just great work. I mean, we can't say enough about how we appreciate those initiatives that you guys are taking, and I'll let the mayor continue.
And now Sandy's going to present the NFIP Community Rating System Improvement to a Class 6 rating.
So this one was a lot of hard work, and I'm not going to bore you with everything, but I did want to bring out, point out a few things. So those of you that are watching in YouTube world, in 2015, we had a CRS rating score of seven, which equates to, it's all a point system. So for certain things you do, you get points. The better you do them, the more points you get, the more things you do, the more points you get. In 2015, we had a total of 1664. In 2020, we ended up with 2416. Now, that is coupled with us reducing our flood, our special flood hazard area by 83%? Something like that? It's something pretty substantial. So to still be able to get points for a very small flood hazard area is pretty impressive. And how do we do that? We did that with our outreach. We went from 66 in 2015 to 150. We went from zero for flood protection vice in 2015 to 55. And that's because Joe is here, I'm here, Steve's here. We help, when people have questions about their flooding, we go out, we talk to them, or we'll refer them to somebody. We'll, we'll do what we can to assist. Our open space went from 291 to 425. That's taken into consideration. We still have a much, we have a much smaller special flood hazard area, so you know, that I will have to attribute a lot of, a lot of thanks to Savannah Newbern, because she did the mapping for me, and if it were not for her, I would have been like pulling my hair out, trying to figure out how to do that stuff. Higher regulatory standards, we went from 385 to 425. Now, that is one of the points of contention we had, because we feel like we should have gotten points for implementing a higher standard with the 10-foot elevation. Anything outside of the SFHA, they didn't give us any credit for. So it was kind of like, erg. We're still working on it, though. We are still working on it. And there are other communities and other entities that are, in fact, Jay McLeod with Stuart, who was our land use plan consultant, just reached out today to say, how did you do this and what did you do? Because other communities need to be thinking about these higher, higher standards outside of the flood maps, because the flood maps are linear. They don't take into consideration areas that are in an X-zone that happen to be in a bowl. So that's, that's still in the works. Our flood data maintenance, the stuff we use to tell people whether they're going to have issues or they have issues, what we use, like the contour maps that we use nowadays. So we were able to go from 165 to 183. The most important and probably the most substantial change we had was a 65 for our hazard mitigation plan in 2015 to a 357 in 2020. And I have to attribute, Wood, Inc., was the consultant with that, and the fact that we reduced the regional area from, you know, what was it, 10 communities in 2015 to two counties and all the municipalities. We also improved on our hazard warning system. We went from 264 to 308. And all that happened with a reduction in our county growth average from 1.05 to 1.02. So all these numbers get multiplied by our growth average, so we had a reduction in that number. So not going to pat myself on the back, but I'm patting myself on the back a little bit. Going forward, I do expect that there's going to be a couple of things that I'm going to try and implement that will help these numbers and put us into a Class 5. And that would be a program for public information and a flood insurance promotion. Those are things that are going to be in the works in the next year or two, not anything urgent. So without further ado, I would like to present to the mayor and town council a new Pelican Award.
Sandy, could you speak to what that means to the ratepayer?
Oh, it's an important part of it, the money. So for every five, it's based on 500 points. For every 500 points, you get a 5% discount. So at a seven, we were getting a 15% discount on our flood insurance, only in the SFHA, okay? Now we get, we will get, is it October that it was becoming effective? October, we will get a 20% discount for flood policies in the SFHA. That's how it was. Now, effective October 1, risk rating 2.0 is going to go into effect. And because of that change, your flood insurance policies, regardless of whether you're in the flood hazard zone, flood hazard area or not, will receive that discount. Because there, there's a shift in how they are rating insurance policies, and so this, this discount is going to apply across the board. So huge savings if you took at it, look at it on a monetary level.
That's fabulous. That's great. Excellent work on that, Sandy. I know, so diligent. She's busy.
Great job, Sandy.
Thank you. Congrats, Sandy.
I don't think y'all were there in 2015. At least, I never told. Thank you, guys.
Great work, just great work. Great work.
I'm going to go on to item number five, the first of two public hearings. Public hearing discussion consideration of SE 21-001, an application by Golden Sand Holding LLC for a special exception seeking modification of one parking space to the minimum parking standard under the village commercial development option relating to the establishment of a one-bedroom apartment above the existing retail shop in Unit 7 of the Soundside Shops at 1180 Duck Road. With this, I'd like to turn over to our town attorney, Robert Hops.
Thank you, Mayor. And as we're going to hear in just a minute, this is a little bit unusual, public hearing in that you've already had this public hearing, and within the 24-hour time period that we discussed last time has now been repealed. There were comments made on the, on the public hearing, so we're going to go back and, in some respects, reopen the public hearing to consider those comments as per the statute that no longer is in effect. So I'm going to read your usual precautionary statements about public hearing for a quasi-judicial hearing, and then we'll open the, then we'll continue with the hearing. So we're going to now open the quasi-judicial hearing and considering an application for a special exception, the town council sits as a quasi-judicial body. Therefore, certain safeguards must be instituted in order to give the applicant a fair hearing. The applicant has the right to cross-examine witnesses and offer rebuttal evidence. The procedure of the ordinance must be followed. The council members may question any witness at any time during the hearing. The council members may question any witness at any time during the hearing. Questions from the floor will not be permitted except by cross-examination from many of the sworn witnesses once recognized to speak. Any member who may not, must not vote on the application if the outcome of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct and substantial financial impact on the member. If a direct and substantial financial impact exists, the member should disclose it at this time and ask to be excused from consideration. If any of the members present have had any contact with anyone prior to the hearing in which particulars of the application were discussed, or if you've received letters, email, email messages, phone calls, or, or other contact from anyone concerning the matter prior to the hearing, please remember you must base your decision on the application entirely on the facts presented during the hearing and disregard particulars discussed with the applicant or other party. A member must base his or a decision on the evidence presented during the hearing. Any member who has developed a predetermined opinion or bias on the outcome of the matter before the hearing must not participate in the decision on the application. Crucial facts used to determine the outcome of the hearing must be based on sworn statements made by witnesses during this hearing. While you may be presented before or during the hearing with copies of unsworn statements contained in letters, emails, and the like, such unsworn evidence can only be used to corroborate or supplement other sworn evidence presented during the hearing. Unsworn evidence such as letters and emails can never be used as the sole basis for your decision. At this time, the town clerk will now swear in the applicant and all witnesses who plan to provide testimony or evidence in this case. Thank you. At this time, Jo Hurd will make her presentation on behalf of the town staff.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbs. Thank you, Mayor, members of council, members of the public in attendance this evening. Just to start off for the record, did want to note that this, this particular public hearing was properly advertised, as outlined in the notice in the staff report in the Coastland Times, as well as notices sent to all property owners on site, as well as adjoining owners. The public hearing sign was posted, and notice was also posted on the town's website and here at Town Hall. So all of that was done within the proper timeframes. I'm not going to get into the details of the proposal. We covered that in full public hearing the second-to-last time the council heard this application, back in your meeting in March. But I did want to ju, just touch real briefly on that history so that we all have an understanding of where we're at and what we're doing tonight. So on that, after the hearing, on that meeting on March 3, the council voted unanimously to approve the request for the special exception for the one relief from one required parking space. The intent was to accommodate an upstairs apartment in one of the units at the Duck Soundside Shops. As you may recall, at the time, town attorney Hobbs touched on this, but there, there were provisions in place that the state legislator, legislature had adopted for virtual or remote meetings, where there was a provision that if comment, written comment was received within 24 hours of that decision, we have to effectively go back and hold another hearing that was scheduled in April, on April 7. Prior to that meeting, staff and council received requests from both the applicant as well as the other business slash property owner who had submitted the written comments with some objections, and they asked you to consider deferring, consider, further consideration of those written comments until this meeting on September 1. The council did grant them that and voted to defer this hearing until this meeting. So that, that's why we are here tonight, and, and that is the, the business that, that you're asked to take care of. So you have some written comments, you're asked to consider those. There was opportunity given for anyone else who wished to participate in this hearing to come here and share additional information with you. You did, in your packets, receive comments from both the applicant and the gentleman, Phil Morgan, who had submitted the original written objections. Mr. Morgan has stated that he does not object to this application moving forward now. They've had ample opportunity to discuss the issues that were raised, and he is satisfied where he is at. So he is not here tonight to provide any additional testimony or ask any additional questions. We do have a representative from the, the applicant here tonight, should you have any, any questions prior to your decision. I did also want to let you know that within the past week, we have also received written comments from attorney Casey Varnell, who is representing Cindy Brightbill, who is also an owner in the Soundside Shops. So we did receive those. But as far as what you're looking at tonight, after reviewing the, the comments, hearing any additional testimony that may or may not occur this evening, the council can do one of two things, and I'll certainly let Mr. Hobbs expound on this if it's necessary. But my understanding is that you have an option of either revisiting your decision that was made back in March to approve this application, or you can make a decision to ratify the prior action that you took to approve the special exception permit. In doing so, you can only base your decision on, you know, again, whether to go with the prior decision or reverse it based on sworn testimony or evidence presented under oath at this hearing. And that's all the advice I can offer you this evening. You know, you've, you've made a decision, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have regarding either the process or any aspect of this application.
Any questions for Jo? That's Roberts.
I'll, I'll wait for any questions first.
Are we, did you say that Mr. Hobbs is going to elaborate on the two paths again? Because it seems...
I was saying he might want to, since he is the one who's trained in giving legal advice.
Yeah, I would, I would like that, a little bit more elaboration.
Yeah, so basically, you made a previous decision on the application, which was to approve it. And that was based, and as you, as you heard a few minutes ago, when I did my spiel and what I said at the previous hearing, was that your decisions in this type of hearing must be based on sworn testimony and evidence presented under oath during the hearing. So the, the 24-hour, you know, rule that used to be in effect allowed for public, for comments to be made within 24 hours after the hearing. So there were comments made, but they were unsworn statements, meaning those comments were not placed before you under oath during the hearing. They were presented as written, unsworn comments after the hearing. So the idea of having the hearing today, or continuation of whatever you want to call it, is to allow any person, whether it's that person or someone else, to make sworn statements or to have the opportunity to make sworn statements or present evidence to you during this hearing. And if there are no further sworn statements made, then it's my view that you really don't have much of a choice but to ratify and continue with the decision made previously, because if you made a contrary decision, it would be likely that it could be shown that that decision was made not on sworn testimony or evidence, but on something else, which you're, you're not really permitted to do. So, so again, the hearing's not over yet. Someone may come up and be under oath and may say something different, but if that does not happen, then I think the, again, can't tell you what to do, but I think the appropriate thing would be to ratify the previous action you took, which was to approve the application.
Thank you for that. And so that would mean that the motion would be to ratify the prior decision made on such and such a day? I think I was just trying to understand what the motion would be.
Yes, I think that would be appropriate because, again, you're, you're, you already made the decision, and, and you based that decision at that previous time on testimony, testimony and evidence made at that time. So you're not basing your decision today on anything that was presented really today, per se, if there's no other sworn evidence or testimony. And so really, the goal here today is to determine if you wanted to consider any other, those comments, so to speak, that were made within the 24-hour period. And the way I would look at it is, do those comments in any way affect the decision that you made at the previous meeting? And I would argue that if, if in fact there are, there is no further sworn testimony or evidence today, then there's really nothing further for you to consider that you didn't already consider at the previous hearing. And therefore, the appropriate action would be to ratify the previous action you took, which was to approve the application.
Thank you.
This approval, if we, we give it to him this evening, one of the tenants there, owners, states here that if a new owners, let's see, if the property's ever sold, the new owners will need to meet with the board and get a yearly approval for this space. Once you get this approval, isn't it going to their deed?
Yearly approval with the association?
Yes.
Well, what happens with the, between the owner and the association is sort of irrelevant.
My question is, we approved this. It goes on to their deed that they got a special approval for this, correct?
Well, you've already, you know, Jo may be able to elaborate. You've already approved it, first of all. And secondly, the, and again, that, this may just be a question of what happens next versus something that would go into your consideration. But obviously, the email or whatever you're reading from is, is unsworn, you know, evidence.
But, and ba, basically, the, the answer there would be no. It is not attached to a deed or doesn't change anything. Those, the association and the decisions they make are separate from the town. You would be, as a council, deciding whether or not to allow this use, whether there are other factors that would, you know, that, other hoops they would have to jump through with their association isn't a decision for the town of Duck. That's between them and the owners there.
But I guess my question is, if this is sold, will the new owners have to come back to us if they're, if that's disallowed?
Well, you are granting them a right to use the property in a certain manner. That, that carries with the land, with the business. That does not change with, change in ownership.
Well, Jo, isn't this special exception only applicable to Golden Sand Holding? We're, we're granting the exception to the current owner and the current LLC.
Technically, it's, it's the property as a whole. That's why it's presented as a, you know, as, when we took a look at this at the original hearing, we looked at the total amount of parking on that site. We looked at the total amount of parking that's required on that site. So it is not tied to just an individual business. You know, obviously, we all understand that the need for that one additional space is based on the interests of one of the, the businesses, but, but it does apply to the property as a whole.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jo? Does the other witness want to make a presentation? Any remaining comments or questions? Okay, so the, the public hearing's closed, and now the council may deliberate on what action it may want to take on this.
Thank you, Robert. Open for deliberation and/or motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we ratify what we, the decision we made previously.
Is that motion sufficient, Robert, with respect to?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any discussion of the motion on the floor?
No, I think it's an unusual circumstance, but we've gotten our facts laid out for us, and nothing's changed. And I think it, that we've, we've got some indication that everybody's worked everything out on their end. So I think all, all systems seem go for, for this.
Any further discussion? If there being none, all in favor, please say aye. Or aye, opposed. The motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you, Mr. Bladman, for attending. Moving on to our second public hearing this evening, public hearing discussion consideration ordinance 21-04, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Duck, North Carolina, updating requirements to enact state of emergency appropriations in actions consistent with NCGS Chapter 166A. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to Jo. Are you going to address that?
To, to Jo Hurd will make her presentation on behalf of the town staff.
Right, Mayor Kingston, members of council. You recall at your last meeting, when we first presented this information and asked for you to set the hearing, I went into some detail at that time about the, the proposal and the reason for the, the change. Since then, after you set the hearing, we did, again, appropriately advertise this hearing in the Coastland Times, as well as posting notice of this hearing on the town's website and here at Town Hall. So all of that is in order as far as the hearing goes. What we have is a, a proposal to Chapter 32, which deals with emergency provisions. So this is an ordinance that allows the town, when, when things happen, whether it's COVID or whether it's a hurricane or any other type of declared emergency, allows the town some flexibility in, in how you deal with those situations. You know, it allows you to adopt certain policies or address certain needs, create certain allowances. A good example of this would be what we did for the restaurants and businesses related to COVID in the early, early stages of, of the pandemic. But it would, could also apply to situations following a hurricane. If we really had a hurricane that caused significant damage, there were things that might be unsafe or other, you know, this would potentially allow a community to adopt a curfew, for instance, should, should that ever be necessary for public safety. So, and that, with that in mind, that's the intent of this ordinance. Nothing about the proposed changes are changing the intent or the purpose of this ordinance. It's still the same. The, the reason why we're before you tonight is that Mr. Hobbs had identified that our ordinance simply need to be updated. You know, we had a few years' worth of changes there in the state legislature where they tweaked some of the standards in the act that allows communities to do this. And we have simply gone in, reviewed our ordinance, reviewed the statutes, and determined what changes were necessary to bring our ordinance into consistency with the state statute. So that, that's what you have before you. We've highlighted and read all of the changes that have been made. And certainly be glad, either myself or Mr. Hobbs, to address any of those specifically if you have any questions or comments. But otherwise, I'll, I'll simply leave it at that. But just to let you know that we are recommending your consideration and approval of these changes to the Emergencies Chapter 32 ordinance.
Questions for Jo?
They all look very straightforward. All your, I like the way you redact things and add them and read, so you easily track the changes, and they, they, they look very easily, easy for anyone to understand.
Okay, thank you. Jo? Are there any members of the public who would like to make a presentation on this proposed ordinance? proposed ordinance? Seeing none, then unless there are any remaining questions, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn this over to council for consideration.
Thank you, Robert. Any further deliberation by council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 21-04, an ordinance of the Town of Duck of North Carolina, updating requirements to enact state of emergency proclamations and actions consistent with NCGS Chapter 166A.
Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Robert. Number six, old business items referred from previous meetings. We have none at this time. Going into seven, new business, discussion consideration of Resolution 21-09, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Duck, North Carolina, for financing the 2022 beach and rednourishment project. This time, I'll turn it over to Town Manager Drew Havens.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have before you a resolution prepared by our bond council and our financial advisors. This is the first of two steps that you will need to participate in in terms of adopting resolutions for our financing for the beach nourishment project. This one resolution covers both financing, so both the, the regular beach nourishment and the FEMA-related beach nourishment are covered in one resolution. The resolution directs me and your consulting staff to make application to the local government commission for approval of this financing. As you're aware, the local government commission controls the issuance of all debt in North Carolina, so we need to make application to them. Passing these, or passing this resolution this evening will allow us to make application to the LGC. We are on their calendar for their October meeting. So the Carters will finish the application package and get it submitted on our behalf with this resolution. This is just the council's approval to move forward. The next set of resolutions will be the bond orders and financing resolutions that will actually then trigger us going to the market for, for financing. So, again, this is just, this is step one of two. Those of you on the council the last time around, when we did these special obligation bonds, you're familiar with this. Happy to answer any questions you might have. And I will, I'll add that the Carters have been working with the LGC staff, you know, in being sure that we have all the information that they need. And the Carters are incredibly good at what they do. They, so they have a very good relationship with the LGC and really know what they're doing.
I guess I do have one question about the actual bids and how they part. Do we have to have the bids and this resolution to submit to the LGC, or just the resolution?
So initially, just, just the resolution.
Who are we working with from Parker Poe? Is it Scott Leo again?
Yes. So the question was, who are we working with, with Parker Poe? So Parker Poe is the bond counsel. Scott Leo is the attorney there that, he, he did the, the last round for you, and he's, he's working on these two.
Any questions for Drew?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 21-09, resolution of the Town of Duck, North Carolina, directing the application to the local government commission for approval of special obligation bonds, requesting local government commission approval of the town's special obligation bonds and certain related matters.
Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Drew. Going on to item number seven B, discussion consideration of Resolution 21-10, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Duck, North Carolina, authorizing and supporting submission of a community conservation assistance program, CCAP, grant for the Town of Duck Living Shoreline Project. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor Kingston, members of council. What we have for you tonight, if you recall, a few months back, you adopted a, a set of financial policies for the town. One of those policies dealt with grant applications and, and councils and when, when you become involved with those. And so that's why we're before you this evening. What we have tonight is, it's just an, an opportunity. It's really a no-lose kind of situation for us. We have an opportunity working with the same grant that we tapped into for our rain garden wetland project. But this would be a much larger amount. It's a different category of funding that they have under that grant program that the mayor mentioned, the CCAP. With that, we're eligible, at least potentially, to get up to $20,000. It may not be that much. We're asking for that. It may end up being a lower amount, depending on other applications they receive. But what we're asking for is that we, after talking with their representative here in Dare County, just found out that we are eligible for the, the marsh grass plantings that are associated with our living shoreline project. So as we move forward with that project, whereas the town would have had a match of, you know, whatever, $240,000, something in that range, if we're able to get the whole brick grant, you know, any money that we can get another grant for is money that we don't have to pay as a town. We can certainly use that for some other good things in the community. So we're just looking at this. It's not a very extensive grant, didn't take a lot of paperwork to, you know, to make this happen. So we're coming to you tonight simply to get your, your blessing, your consideration and blessing to adopt this resolution that would authorize us to submit the grant application and also offer your support for the application, because that, that is one component that we would want to submit along with the application itself. There is no match required from the town's standpoint. Again, that's the, that's why I say it's a no-lose proposition. You know, we're, we're already paying a good amount of money, you know, for the project overall, and that effectively serves as our match. So it's just if we're able to get something, that's, that's great.
Great.
That's it. But be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Joe? There being none, I'll entertain a, a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution, Resolution 21-10, resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Duck, North Carolina, authorizing and supporting submission of a community conservation assistance program grant for the Town of Duck Living Shoreline Project.
Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Joe. Item number seven C, Duck Rain Garden Stormwater Wetland Interpretive Signage Presentation by Brandon Hurd, Boy Scout Troop 165, a discussion possible motion to approve funding budgeted and the design and installation of the project. And just to note, you'll probably notice the last name. He's fairly well associated with the town. He's also working on his eagle badge. So, Brandon, welcome.
Um.
Brayden, I'm sorry.
Good evening, members of council, Mr. Mayor. I am Brayden Hurd, with Troop 165 out of Manio, North Carolina. And I am here tonight about, yes, if you, you can see on the screen, I have a sort of presentation to go along with this. I'm here tonight to talk to you about my Eagle Scout project that I'm working on. And I've been working on this sort of in the background for the past couple of months in conjunction with the town. So the basis of my project is working to design and install some signage that's going to be educational interpretive signage at the newly finished, constructed rain garden wetland area. So the purpose of this is just to generally educate the, educate the public, tourists, residents here, just anyone who happens to walk by, about sort of the value and uses of natural stormwater management techniques, and just overall give a sort of brief overview of what the garden actually does. So the content of the sign, I'll be doing some research myself, and then be working with the town and the Dare County Soil and Water Conservation District as well, to sort of just check up some information, make sure they have everything that they want on the sign, if they have any suggestions on the design and aesthetics too, just sort of to get the sign how everyone wants it. So the location is just in front of the rain garden, sort of adjoining the sidewalk across from the playground area and the park entrance. And that right there where the circle is, it's sort of, there's a little garden bed right there in between, but the sign will be right there by the sidewalk. So the sign itself will be about two, two feet by three feet. Right now, we're thinking it's going to be mounted on wooden posts, so that's liable to change to metal or something, depending on manufacturer. And it's angled probably about 45 degrees, just for better visibility reading for everyone. And the sign itself, as part of the project, will be installed by my troop and I, one Saturday morning or something. When all the materials are here and the sign's manufactured, it'll be installed by me and some scouts helping out from my troop. So the sign itself is estimated to be at around $1,200 at price. Most of that is just the price of the actual sign manufacturing. The rest of the materials don't cost all that much. I'm currently in the process of working with the Dare County Soil and Water Conservation for about $600 of that, so like half the cost, pretty much. And the rest of the stuff, like supplies, whatever else is needed, will be provided by me and the troops through other means. So I am asking the town for a commitment to help me proceed with this project and fund the remaining costs for the sign and the rest of the materials needed. And if you all had any questions for me regarding the project, I'll be happy to answer. If you all don't have any questions, I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration tonight, and have a good evening.
I do have one question, Brayden. I'm sorry. This is fabulous, number one. Thank you so much. And I may have missed it at the beginning of the presentation. Did you design the, the sign?
Um, yes, I'm going to be working with the town, and I'll be sort of the one responsible and behind designing the sign. But I'll be checking up with the town, making sure it's everything they sort of want on the sign, and just everything's squared away, how they'd like it to be, generally.
Wonderful. Very, very exciting that you're involved and that your troop is involved. Thank you.
Brayden, how will it be protected? Will it be under plexiglass, or will it be actually engraved on plexiglass, or?
Um, I believe it's going to be sort of printed on like a plastic composite sign, sort of how you'd find a, a nature trail or something like a national park.
Yeah.
I believe it's going to be somewhat of that design.
Yeah, thank you.
Wonderful.
Yep.
Thank you, Brayden.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to provide the remaining costs of the sign.
I'd like to make a motion that the Town of Duck provide the additional cost for the rain garden sign.
Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes five to zero. Good luck, Brayden.
Thank you for your hard work.
And good luck as you pursue your recall.
Yeah, that's fabulous.
Going on to item number eight, items referred to in presentations from the town attorney. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. I previously sent to everyone by email, I believe it was yesterday, a copy of a draft easement. The, we were contacted by Town Southern Shores. They've, basically, as you know, they're also doing a nourishment project along with the Town of Duck. And their project design initially was to stop at the common boundary line between Southern Shores and Duck. But now, the design has extended slightly into the Town of Duck for Taper Area. And so the town manager for Southern Shores and I talked about it and thought that one way to approach that would be to have the Town of Southern Shores solicit easements from the property owners in the Town of Duck in the Taper Area, and that an easement would be obtained from those property owners. That would benefit both the Town of Southern Shores and the Town of Duck, with the idea that, that initially, at least for this project, the beneficiary would be the Town of Southern Shores, because that's who's in charge of the project. But at some point in the future, the easement could be utilized by the Town of Duck if the Town of Duck designed a project that included these areas down towards the, the southern end of the town. So basically, the, and I've given you a draft of what it might look like, and it, we've added language to explain the purpose and why there are two grantees on, on the deed. And so the, I would ask that the council approve the easement form and authorize the town to accept easements in conjunction with the Town of Southern Shores for that taper area, and authorize me as the town attorney and, and the town manager to negotiate any changes to the easement wording that a property owner might request. And of course, that would also be done in conjunction with the Town of Southern Shores as well, who we also represent.
Robert, would this be a cost to Southern Shores?
It would be to the, we, we would, right. I've not specifically run that by the other town manager, but I'm confident that that would all be within the Southern Shores expenditures because it's their project. And so the only reason that's coming before you is because you're a named grantee or party. And so that would be, that would be the reason. But, but we would be working under the Town of Southern Shores dime to actually procure these easements from the Duck property owners. A little unusual situation, but.
Yeah.
But anyway, just wanted to bring this to your attention and to get your approval for that. And I think it would just be appropriate for your town manager to also approve any changes that are necessary. So, for example, if the easement is exactly the way it's presented, then there would be any other approval or review necessary. But if, you know, on occasion, a property owner may want some slight changes in wording or something like that, in which case, I think it'd be appropriate for the town manager to at least look at it and, and to weigh in on it. And your, our suggested motion would authorize me and the town manager to look at and approve any such changes like that.
You know how far into Duckett's going to go with, and we've got Ocean Crest there, and I guess we've got Bayous Shores.
Yeah, I don't have the exact information in front of me right now. In fact, I've, I've not been provided with the properties yet. So when we're provided with those properties by Southern Shores, we would then prepare all the easements for those property owners using the form that we have here. And then those would be sent, just as the same procedure you've used with your project, those would be sent to property owners and requested that they be signed. Also, this form, I don't expect any changes from Southern Shores, but if there are any, then I'd like to, again, have you authorize me and your town manager to approve any changes that may come back from Southern Shores. But again, I don't really expect any.
Any further questions for Robert? Do you want to help us with the, the motion, Robert?
You could make a motion to approve the easement form as presented, to authorize the acceptance by the town of easements from property owners under this form, and to authorize the town attorney and town manager to negotiate or to approve and negotiate changes to the easement form as may be requested by property owners.
Is there any for council, just to make that motion as stated by you?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make that motion stated by Robert Hobbs, our town attorney.
Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Item number nine, items referred to in presentations to town manager. Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Black will make the first presentation, then Lieutenant Clark, Mr. Hurd, and... Uh, Chief Black will make the first presentation, then Lieutenant Clark, Mr. Hurd, and this
Good evening again. Um, I'm here to present the August, uh, data and also update you on activities with the fire department. Today's September first, twenty twenty-one. It's also the start of, um, emergency preparedness month. So you'll see things pushed out through social media with Duck Fire on that topic. Uh, one update, we are working with Lexipol. That's the company that's updating our SOGs and doing our, our risk management piece. And through that, this is our mission statement, but we've actually improved it, uh, in twenty twenty-one. And this is the mission statement that will be going up on the website and, uh, we've worked with Lexipol on. It's basically said the same thing, except we did add the last line. I think it's a really important line in twenty twenty-one, "While providing an inclusive and safe working environment." And that's broad scope, uh, safe within the firehouse and also when we're on calls and when we're training. So I just share that with you. We'll be releasing our first set of SOGs next week. So we'll get to the data real quick. Uh, through the end of August, we've had four hundred and seven calls for the year. To put this in perspective, last year, we had a total of four hundred and eighty-four calls. So we're way ahead, um, as you've kinda seen those numbers over the last few months. Interestingly though, we're about the same for August. So I think what you'll see with the data, especially going into retreat, that it's, it's the shoulder seasons that are really gonna start amping up our call volume. And July was a pretty big month, but compared to other years, August was about the same. But overall, we're, we're almost a hundred calls ahead. Most of those calls were either rescue calls or alarm activations. Numbers are a little skewed. Sandalingan was having some issues with those, their alarm system, so that was probably five or six of these calls, but that was the majority for the month. And also what we tend to see, the more people that are here, they're cooking, they're burning the bacon, um, they may have some maintenance issues with their alarms. And again, for us, we're gonna respond to all of them, uh, worried that there might be smoke or fire, uh, until determined otherwise. When you look at it in pie chart form, just about half our calls were EMS-related calls this month. As far as activities, we had a, again, total of ni- seventy-nine incidents, zero fire inspections, which we would expect we hold off in the summer, um, unless we have re-inspections. And then Sandy will be our taskmaster soon with the new schedule for the fall, probably, uh, once we get towards October. And then we had two hundred and fifty-four training hours, a little lower than you might see in some other months, but, uh, everyone's busy with calls and it is the last month of summer. We've continued with standbys by Dare County's availability and their time, uh, that they can allot up here without other calls. Whoops. And again, I'll be checking with Chief Collins as we go forward into the fall. I think Lieutenant Clark will present some numbers. There's definitely been a drop-off, uh, this past week, uh, with the LPR, so we'll definitely be monitoring this going into the fall. And this slide, I hope will explain operationally what we've just done with those firefighters. So we have three shifts, as, as I've talked before, uh, you should recognize my grid here from November of last year. They work twenty-four hours, so they work seven-thirty a.m. till seven-thirty the next day, A, B, and C shift. So what we've done, starting tomorrow, is we will have four assigned to those three shifts. What this does is allows for a minimum of three, starting tomorrow morning at seven-thirty, the Town of Duck will provide a minimum of three full-time firefighters, twenty-four-seven for all calls, uh, and all responses. Honeymoons, weddings, things like that. Sometimes there will be four, but the, there will never be below three. Um, and that's what we did. I feel really comfortable with this model. You have chiefs on call, we have our volunteer response that are also responding and coming back, and especially for second calls and larger calls. Um, this model, I think, is sustainable for a long time. Um, I won't tell you what the long time is, but, uh, we'll continue to monitor, um, volunteers and things like that. But I'm very comfortable as your chief to say, we have someone there, three, minimum three someones there, twenty-four-seven. I think the community deserves this, needs this, and, uh, I know I'll sleep better at night, so thank you.
Chief, could I ask a question on that?
Sure, sure.
So when you say three, um, you're saying three employees or just, you know, one volunteer maybe in that mix?
Three employees. So our minimum staffing will be three employees, twenty-four-seven.
Great.
And then we encourage, uh, volunteers to ride. So if they wanna be the fourth, um, we may have occasions where they wanna ride, there might be five sitting there, we're not gonna send them all to the same call, but we want the volunteers to still get some experience. We could use, I'm gonna highlight Joel in a minute, we would use Joel. Um, he's one of our volunteer suppression firefighters that doesn't live in town. He would choose his days to stand by with us on days we only had two, to try to keep it to three. So we can use a volunteer, um, we were using a volunteer to try to keep it to three prior to this because we couldn't guarantee that. But, um, going forward, there will be a minimum of three employees.
Thanks.
So with that, I'll highlight the two volunteers, uh, for the month. The first one's Todd Aaron, it's probably not a name you hear. He's like our little silent support firefighter. You actually probably see him more running up and down. He runs almost every day. Uh, Todd's been with us for four and a half years. He's one of our support firefighters. He does a lot with us on truck checks on Saturdays and with trainings. He, he's not one of our bigger responders in the support role, but he's been with us for four and a half years and he's, uh, doing a great job to help us on the weekends. And then I just mentioned Joel, and I've highlighted Joel before. Joel's only been with us for two years and three months, and in that time, he's, uh, he has eleven hundred and forty-two hours. And it about takes that to get him. So think about that when you look at career staffing. We can put him up against Dave and Aaron and, and Greg here. He's had training, um, but to get to that point, it was just recently, he became a suppression firefighter and look at the hours he's put in, uh, to get to that point. So we have used him. He chooses his standby days by our staffing. So we thank both of them for their service to us. And then just quickly, um, in August, I had the opportunity to go out to Racine, Wisconsin. Um, I don't know if you've heard of the Johnson Foundation at Wingspread. It's a retreat location. Can read, you can, you can actually Google it. This is built by Frank Lloyd Wright in the thirties, I think. Um, but I was, uh, I had the opportunity and honor to be invited to this conference. It was Wingspread Seven. It's an invitation only for fire service leaders. Um, it's basically a fire service think tank. So they gathered people from all over the country. There's about thirty of us there, um, for three days, and it was a think tank to identify the emerging issues for the fire service or any continued issues that we haven't completely addressed. Um, a paper's being written right now. We'll have some edit, um, authority with it when it comes out. And basically, a document will be produced by the end of the year, um, on the issues of national significance concerning fire and rescue. Where will it go? It'll be disseminated through fire and rescue services, ICMA, and also Congress. So, um, I was privileged to be a part of it and again, representing smaller volunteer combination departments, so I just wanted to let you all know about that. And also, in about a week, we will be, um, remembering twenty years of nine-eleven. So we will do a short, um, service, if you will, on Saturday, September eleventh, starting at nine forty-five a.m. The community's invited, the fire department will be there. We will be reading all three hundred and forty-three names. Um, I had the opportunity to hear, uh, Joe Pfeiffer and Sal Casano speak from New York City a few weeks ago. Joe Pfeiffer was the first chief officer on scene, uh, of the towers, and it was very compelling, um, one, it was a presentation, but I had a few minutes aside with, with both of them and, um, they, the thing they left me with is, and Duck Fire will never forget. So we'll be there on September eleventh. And with that, I'll take any questions.
That'll be at the fire department?
Yes, at the fire department.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Donna.
You're welcome. I'm just gonna help, uh, Lieutenant Clark out here. And tomorrow's her one-year anniversary of being lieutenant.
I appreciate, um, the opportunity to present to you guys tonight. Um, just to let you know, Chief Ackerman is out of town. His mom's having some surgery tomorrow, so, um, we wish him well and, uh, hope everything turns out there. For August, uh, just some brief, oh, okay, they got the wrong thing up here. Christian. This is the, uh. This is last month. But I can make it.
Huh.
Go one slide down. Same presentation.
Oh, same presentation?
Back to that same presentation, just go one slide down.
All right, we're gonna need someone bigger than me.
Go one more. Is that which one? No?
That's last month, but I can still speak to it.
That's what they put in today. I saw it pop up.
Just to give you some, uh, numbers, uh, traffic enforcement actions, we had forty-eight this month. That's a little bit down from last month, um, but we did have a much higher call volume, which would, you know, keep some of the officers from, from dealing with that. Um, motor vehicle crashes are down, which we're happy to see on that. And we continue to do the extra patrols. I just got the numbers in from, from the county, and, uh, one thing I really like when I just saw these numbers, we had eight hundred and thirty-seven self-initiated calls. A hundred and ninety-nine of the, uh, a hundred and ninety-nine calls were dispatched. To me, that just shows how proactive the police department we have. You know, we're not standing by waiting on the radio to tell us where to go and what to do, and this is officers, you know, out in, out of their cars, on foot patrols, doing business checks, engaging the public with anything from, you know, illegal parking or the golf cart issues and stuff. So that just, that speaks volumes to me as a, as a lieutenant, I'm sure to Chief Ackerman as well, that we're not constantly having to push these guys to do things. They're, they're getting out and doing it proactively. And then, as Chief Black was mentioning, the, uh, LPR has shown, the first four weeks of August, we're all steady, um, pretty constant across the board. This past week, we have seen a significant drop in the traffic. I'm sure you've all seen, seen as well, which is somewhat of a blessing for those of us that have been stuck in some of the traffics on this summer. Um, but it's cut down just about in half. And, uh, this is the part that I'm really excited about. We, we like to brag on our officers when we have the opportunity, and, um, just in the past month, people have come out of the woodworks and sent, um, letters to the officers, emails to me and chief. Um, I think Christian had one, um, on Facebook, and we had another situation where a lady came in from a call in, in May to talk to me. And I'm just gonna highlight a few of those. Sergeant Knight and Officer Davis, uh, responded to a vehicle that was broken down on July twenty-ninth. And the two of them were riding by, saw the vehicle, uh, or Sergeant Knight stopped just to see what they needed. Uh, the part was something the guy thought that he could fix. So Sergeant Knight picked the guy up, he offered him a ride, took him to the auto parts store. They weren't able to find the part, so Sergeant Knight offered his vehicle, his personal vehicle, to the family.
Oh, my gosh.
Um, and the whole time, Jeremy Davis, um, stood by with the family, offered them drinks, made sure that they were comfortable. And what the lady wrote was, "I will forever love Duck, North Carolina, and Duck, North Carolina Police Department. Um, you guys sure have some awesome officers who gave of themselves, uh, unselfishly." And that speaks volumes, you know, the, the type of guys that you, that we have, the ones that you put in place. And, uh, Jeremy's a new guy, and it was awesome just to, to hear that. Um, another situation, we had our big guys, John and Tim, um, who we always like to kinda joke about 'cause they're, they're that big bulky cop. You know what I'm talking about.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
But, um, so they responded to a medical call in May, and this lady stopped by the police department. And she said, "I'm sorry it's taken me so long. Get here." She's like, "But I never really realized the volume and the, the impact these, what these guys did meant to me." She said, "I'm seventy-eight years old, I've never called nine-one in my life." And she said, "I was in a lot of pain, they were the first two people to respond." And they kinda treated her like a grandma. They calmed her down, they made sure, they asked all the right questions, they presented that information to incoming fire and EMS. They stood by and made sure the ambulance knew where to go. But above that, um, I'm not sure which one did, they both kinda were involved, they made sure she had her phone, her charger, her keys, her medicine, her wallet, everything that she needed. And she said she had no idea, you know, of what she would need or anything, but they made sure that she had all those things before she left. They offered to make any phone calls she might need to family and make sure that, um, her house was secured and locked, but also that she had the keys to get in when she came back. And, um, the forethought that they had really meant a lot to her. And not only that, but they calmed her before EMS got there because like she said, she'd never, ever called nine-one. So she made, they made a big impact on her. And then the last one was one that, um, Christian got through Facebook, and this was, uh, a fire department call, and, uh, Officer Tim Armstrong responded with the fire department. And this was on Old Duck Road, and this guy's kids were act, he's actually a police officer in a, in the, in the city. And he said, of all the years that he'd been a, he's a lieutenant, um, he'd never seen the kindness that he saw from Officer Armstrong. Said his, his kids had seen fire trucks and police cars and everything, you know, growing up around it, but they kept looking and watching. And Tim invited them in, turned on all the lights, pushed the sirens, handed out the little extra things, and it meant the world to him. And, uh, he said, "We vacation here every year and have had nothing but great experiences with the Duck Police Department, and tonight was no exception." But what I really wanna say to you guys is, you know, we can send these guys to all the schools in the world, we can do online training, and we can send them to Salemburg or wherever it is, but you cannot teach character. And that's something that these guys show on the daily. And it's, it's really cool when we start getting this information and getting the kudos 'cause they're hardworking guys, but the, the character behind them is way better than anything that you're gonna get in most agencies. And it's across the board. It's not just one, two, or three, it's, it's all of them. And, uh, that's all I have. If you have any questions?
No, that's fabulous. That is so great to hear. Thank you.
You guys did that. You, you allow us to hire guys that have that kinda character, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, Missy.
All right, the first presentation, not, not super exciting tonight with the permit activity. Um, just a pretty standard month overall, you know, nothing too, nothing that really stands out. Um, you know, just slightly up as far as building permits from year to year. Um, overall, you can see down there in the bottom left corner, um, the total amount of permitting is up seven percent, so still tracking well, um, in terms of that and looking at the maps. Um, one thing that, that usually doesn't stand out for us are the colors of these pins. Um, what, what we see in both the north and south, you see a large number of green pins. Um, what those are, are that, that's, those are mechanical permits, so I guess with the heat, that's everybody's HVAC system petering out and they needed replacing a unit or whatever it was. So an awful lot of that activity, um, you know, keeping all our properties functioning well. Um, no, no particular clusters of activity or anything like that. Um, we did have three, um, very substantial permits here for rehabilitation, renovation, and that type of thing. Um, one at one-twenty-six Bayberry, um, with a three- One at 126 Bayberry with a three-story addition on that house. One at 130 Seabreeze, again, another significant two-story addition. And third at 134 Bayberry. It's really, a lot of it's just renovations and that type of thing, converting some existing decking to interior space. So again, just some different additions on those properties there. No new construction permits in the past year. We have some more, but these are all, nothing else of great significance to share there. But obviously, still moving forward, as we always talk about this, for us, to some degree, the summer months are when things tend to slow down for our department to some degree. We're still doing inspections and that type of thing, but the permitting activity often waits to pick up until the, you know, really those winter and spring months when everybody's really getting things going, getting ready for the season. So the main presentation for a department. First, wanted to highlight, I think all of you probably received from our manager some information about this. So Jared shared the census results, what you see there, really substantial. We do have some aspects of our funding as a town that are based on these figures, so to see an increase, where our town doubled in size according to the official records of the census, you know, we should see some increases in those types of funds that are dispersed based on population. I think we got a combination of things going on there. I don't know how much of that we picked up due to COVID with people moving here, but there may be some element of that, but probably not as much as you, because it really came in on the tail end of the census activities. So I really don't think that that's what this is about. I really do think that this is, these are people who over the years have made that move. We've all heard those stories about, you know, the folks who've owned vacation properties or second homes for a number of years and finally found themselves in a position where they could make the move down here. And that's what we're seeing there. Highlight, just bring you up to date on a couple of projects, our duck trail improvements that are funded in this year's budget. Will involve, you know, this is North Oyster Catcher Lane in that stretch up there, will involve concrete and permeable concrete. We do have the bid packages out for that project. We're holding a pre-bid meeting next week and anticipate having the bid opening September twenty-third and construction beginning. You know, it's really as soon as the contractors are, the selected contractors are available. So we hope to have a proposal to you for your consideration at the October meeting as far as a potential contract with the company and looking at construction in the fall, that could be October, November start depending on the contractor. Our coastal resiliency project, that, you know, that collection of projects for which we've applied for the brick grant. One of these months, I'm gonna be able to give you a final answer on that big grant we've been seeking, but for now, we're still awaiting that decision on the $1.7 million grant. VHB has completed their final design. You know, that's under review by NC DOT and will be under further review by the environmental permitting agencies once DOT gives their blessing. If you recall, they are a partner, they own the road that we're looking at improving. And so since a lot of that work comes in the right-of-way, they were very generous in allowing us to take the lead on the design and engineering aspects of that. And they are simply reviewing those things now to make sure that they meet their standards. So we hope to hear something from them in the coming weeks, and then we'll be able to move those forward, looking at a bid probably sometime in October for that project. Again, some of that's dependent on funding, some of that'll be dependent on easements. We will, now that we have, once we get a little bit more confirmation with that final design, we will be able to approach some of the neighborhood associations. As I mentioned before, the main reason we need the easements is just tying in to the roads and some of those private roads, we need to bring that elevation in. We don't want to create a bowl where our road is higher at the highway, their road comes in, and we create an area that collects stormwater. We don't want to see that. In order to do that, we need to gently taper that in and up, which in some cases requires us to go onto that private road right-of-way. So we're not needing easements from property owners other than Barrier Island Station. We will present to you, probably at the next meeting, just do a quick overview of the final design so that you have a good idea of the project and what's involved with it. Beachware Nourishment, we had a big email today from Ken Wilson with CPE. We have received our KAMA major permit, one of the big steps that we had. Again, it's a KAMA permit, but that covers a great variety of the environmental review agencies. They all participate under that umbrella of the KAMA permit. So we do have other, there are other permits we need, but that's really one of the big ones. We did do a pre-bid meeting last month in August. We have the initial bid opening tomorrow. If we receive three bids, bids from three different companies, we will be able to move forward with evaluating those bids and coming to you in October for, you know, as far as a contract award. However, if we don't get three bids, we do have a plan in place to quickly turn around and have a second bid opening the following week, September the ninth. Some of the feedback we've gotten leads us to believe that if we don't get three initially, we will have three by that time. So either way, we'll still be able to get that before you in October. We are still trying to find a few things relating to construction access, but we've also taken an additional step of, it's our understanding, we have some of the contractors bidding on the projects are actually looking at approaching neighborhood associations that have that potential and working with them directly to see if they're willing. They can promise things that we as a town cannot. They can say, "We'll start this project in May, it'll end in mid-June." We could never make those promises during the process of negotiating those accesses. So we're hopeful that they're able to successfully work, to be able to address some of those concerns that the potential neighborhoods have, and maybe work something out that's more convenient for them than having to come all the way up from southern shores. Still, you know, on schedule with everything for construction summer 2022. Traffic study, everybody's aware of this, at your last meeting, the council directed staff to go ahead and look at this, so we were able to contract with VHB on this. You saw that earlier on your agenda. VHB has put out cameras that were out there for over a week. To be honest, they were supposed to pull those up today, I don't know if that happened or not yet, but they've been up for a week. They put them up last Tuesday, and then those were supplemented, as many of you are aware, we had the volunteers out there, our, you know, great thanks to Sandy Cross for organizing that volunteer effort very quickly. Huge thanks to the volunteers who agreed to do that on very short notice. We ended up with twenty-four volunteers on each of two days, Wednesday and Saturday, observing what was going on with traffic, why traffic stopped, when it stopped, pedestrian, you know, or other reasons and things like that, whether it involved making left-hand turns, things that'll help us and help VHB understand some of the reasons why traffic stoppages are occurring. VHB has also put out traffic count tubes, those things to identify again when traffic is heavier and occurring, also measuring the speeds of traffic, so that's another thing. And then they are also pulling, so those are all things that are going on right now. They're also pulling, they're able to acquire historical traffic data, it's really used from cell phones so that they can take a look, and none of this is tied to individuals and what any individual is doing, but they're able to see as a collection of data what people are doing. How many people are coming in and turning into a road or a business in Duck? How many are just simply passing through, going up to Corolla or south, heading through Duck? It'll help us understand where that traffic is being generated, what it's doing as it's passing through Duck. So with all of these things, VHB is gonna take all of this kind of data and put together a traffic study for us that'll hopefully help us as a community get a better handle on what's going on. And they will also be making recommendations, sharing some thoughts with us about ways that they've observed that we might be able to improve some of the things as far as traffic. So that's what we can expect as a product. I don't have a date on that, but we'll, you know, hopefully that could be something we could share at the next meeting, we'll see, we'll keep in touch with them. Comprehensive land use plan, also had great news over the past week on that, we did receive approval after fourteen months of review by the Division of Coastal Management. We've received approval to move forward with this, and our next step is to bring this back for a public hearing at the October Town Council meeting. We will be presenting this to the planning board at their meeting next week for a recommendation. We'll just talk with you a little bit about the types of changes that were made. There's nothing substantive where we're changing recommendations that were made, but there are some things, we'll try to explain that to you, the types of changes that were made at their behest. And that's all I had for you this evening, but I'd be glad to answer any questions council might have.
I do have a question, thank you so much, great report. On the northern sidewalk improvements, and I may be, you know, getting you with a question you can't answer, so we can get back to it, but my question is, remind me, please, have we done the engineering for that whole section?
And with that, you're referring to the section between Resort Realty and Sunset Grill, is that what you're talking about there?
No, I mean, the one that we're going out for bid, that we're doing a segment.
Okay, okay, the one's up with the Sanderly neighborhood, yeah.
Yeah, and then we were kind of, during the budget session, we were sort of talking about, should we do the whole thing, or should we just do a hundred thousand dollars? Or, you know, we were having those discussions, and I just wasn't reminded if all the engineering is in place. So for example, you know, we had a case last year or the year before where the contractor was able to kind of extend a really good deal because they were already up there mobilized, and I just couldn't remember if we had the engineering all in place for any additional linear foot of improving that sidewalk.
Okay. And what you're referring to is last, it really probably occurred around winter months of last year, you know, maybe either late nineteen or early twenty. What we had at that time was an opportunity with some, you know, we got very good bids last year. We did have some money left over, and we had that conversation at that point in the last fiscal year as to whether we wanted to spend out, well, you know, we were talking about the rest of that money and how much we could accomplish.
Okay.
And the other questions that were asked then, there was sort of an in-between option where we could extend it a little bit to complete the permanent side, not the permeable, but the, you know, the regular sidewalk. And then there was another for, it was a hundred and ten thousand dollars to complete the whole rest of that stretch. The council at that time opted to just go with the original project, use that money to extend to the degree you could, but to spend out the two hundred thousand that had been budgeted, because that was already a
That's right.
Double over what we had done previous years.
Okay, thanks for
So that was at that time, but that was all last fiscal year. The one hundred and ten that was left is what we had, that is this project for this year.
Okay.
So it's that stretch, that the hundred and ten.
And that will complete that area?
And the engineering is completely done for that. And then if we, you know, if we do happen to get some other things, it would probably, we wouldn't anticipate it would be that much different from the estimate in terms of having a lot of money left over. But if we did, we would probably look at that, maybe going toward engineering for the next phase, whatever priority was set for that, so we could get that in place and then only have to pay for the physical improvements.
Great, thanks for recapping that for me because that was a little bit blurry, appreciate it.
All right.
Joe, I have a question on the brick project. In your estimation, if we don't get a brick decision by when, the decision will be made whether we go with the sidewalks and doing shoreline, or in fact, we delay for another year, what do you think that date is when we got to hear on the brick decision from FEMA? Just an estimate.
I think we would probably be concerned if we're getting into late October, I would say, and we don't have the answers yet, because we, you know, again, it's very important for us, even more so than the phases of the sidewalk that we've done before, where we've very purposefully in the bid packages and working with the contractors made sure that there was no significant traffic stoppage, and that we did that work during the off-season when it didn't have a significant an impact on traffic. With this project, that those impacts are gonna be much more substantial. There's no question we're gonna be going into lengthy periods where we're only gonna have one lane. Now, they're always gonna keep something open, but that, you know, that definitely makes things more challenging for people traveling through there when we have to have the flagman on each side and, you know, and having that type of, that level of traffic control. So we need to accomplish it during that off-season, and that would, that's probably about when I would be concerned that we might not be able to start it in time to complete it by late spring.
Thank you.
Would that, would we think we would just postpone again then, because we're making such financial, or that would be a decision for council?
We would, yeah, we would come back to you and ask those questions again. Would probably have to feel out the granting agencies to get their thoughts on another round of delay as well. They would certainly have a role in that, and I would want to get feedback from the neighborhoods that, you know, we did ask them last time as well, you know, letting them know that this was, you know, a delay, because they're looking forward to these things, so, you know, we certainly want, you know, there's an expectation that we'd be able to do this this year, and we want to, you know, get their input as well for you as part of that decision-making process.
You gotta think FEMA's really busy right now.
Do you think? Thank you, Joe.
Hey, good evening, council and everyone watching on YouTube. I will jump right into my presentation here. So first, I'm gonna start off just with a quick overview of where we are with summer events. We do have a few events that are gonna be going on into September, but I'll just go through what we had June through August right now. We've had a total of fifty-four events, thanks to Betsy's very hard work and the work of our volunteers. Our total overall attendance for all of those events, it's a little over four thousand. And you can see a variety of events here. The concerts have been pretty well attended, and people are doing a really great job of social distancing, and thank goodness we have a lot of room on the green, so it's been very helpful for people. So it's been very helpful for people. We have been following all the CDC guidelines for outdoor events. So we have hand sanitizing stations. We request that everyone social distance and we do have masks available for people if they're more comfortable. Fitness on the Green will continue through September. That's something that we're doing this year. A lot of people have requested that, so we're going to see how it goes. And we're looking at possibly having two additional small concerts those first two weeks of September, something we discussed with the Council over the past few years. And I believe last year was the, the first year we were going to try to do a couple in, into September and obviously that didn't happen. So if we can make it work, if the COVID numbers stay okay, if people can still social distance, we will try that and we'll let you know. This, I just had to make a fun graph because it felt like a graph kind of day. So these are the average number of attendees for each type of event we've had. And then the bars are the number of occurrences of the events and then the line is the average number. So you can see that Magic and Concerts are, are very well attended. I lose my pointer, here we go. So Magic's only had eight occurrences so far, but they have averaged about 156 people at each one. Concerts, there's only been four so far in August and they average a little over 250 there. And the rest of these numbers are pretty typical for us. Shaw Car, we're very, very happy with how many kids have been attending, attending that. It's actually turned out to be a really popular event. And then Nature Out Loud, for those who may not remember, that's the children's band that comes. They sing really great songs about nature and the world around you and they're written all themselves and the kids get really involved. So those have been really well attended too. I also wanted to show a quick update on some of our new merchandise. It's been selling very well at events. We have set up a Square account so we can take credit cards in person. And that's really made a difference for, it seems to be for how people are purchasing items. Betsy has been doing some pop-up shops downstairs, either in the lobby or out on the porch, which has worked out really well. And so she's planning to do some more of those in through the fall. And we are going to have this information on our website and we're working out the logistics of how to be able to ship items to people. We can't take credit cards over the phone, so there'll be check purchases, but we're pretty close to getting that worked out. So if anyone, if any of you need some new low good merchandise, let me know. I know some people. Obviously, everyone knows that the Jazz Festival has been canceled slash postponed to 2022. All of the artists except one have agreed to sign a new contract. And the one that hasn't agreed yet is the same one who had to pull out this year abruptly due to visa issues because of COVID. So we'll hang tight and really hope that her band will be able to come next year. Just some updates from our department. COVID, 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 as we keep putting out the weekly information from the county and the state. We are live streaming all of our town council meetings via YouTube. And I just want to remind everyone watching at home that we do live stream, but then I do have to post-produce it. I have to add some screen, black screen time and some things for it to be able to be shown on current TV. So that's why there's a post-produced one that usually is posted on Friday after the council meetings. As we head into our historic hurricane peak, we are increasing our hurricane preparation information. We did do a whole week of hurricane prep at the beginning of the summer in conjunction with National Weather Service, but typically we roll out more information now as well. We are in the midst of putting together a fall newsletter that should be mailed middle of September. And you guys heard a really great presentation about the rain garden signage tonight, so I won't go into that. But speaking of signage, we do have these storm surge polls. We have two of them that have come from the county through Dare County, Dare County Emergency Management. And every town received two and they come with their own signage. You can see it installed just to the right there. And I have a small inset here, but basically it's a way for people to visualize describing storm surge. The Weather Service has found that it's very difficult for people to visualize what three feet or six feet of storm surge really is. And so the poll is marked with these colors and so that you can stand right there and look, say, at the top of the blue line and that's three feet of storm surge to get an idea, for people to get an idea. So right now this is installed where our picnic shelter is. So when you look at the sign, you look out over the sound and you get a really good sense of if you were standing there right near water level, what those levels would be. We are considering a second location, possibly ultimately near the Brick Grant Project, near the living shoreline, but we're still looking, still working some things out on a second location. So I'll be publicizing this some in our E-News and on social media. And then just a short calendar, some of the things we have coming up. We've been contacted by the League of Women Voters. They're setting up their candidates forum on October 4th. October 12th is our first nature on the boardwalk this year at the request of the aquarium and discussion between Betsy and myself. It'll be limited, a very strict limit of 15 participants to allow for people to spread out around Rana as she gives her presentations. October 15th, we do have our bulk waste collection planned and there, there are instructions for that on our website and we'll send out additional instruction reminders. And on October 21st, the Outer Banks Hospital will be here in the meeting hall and they'll be doing a flu vaccine clinic. And that is all I have. Do you guys have any questions?
Oh, just on the flu vaccine, is that just a non-appointment thing where they just?
Yep, it's just a drop-in one. And I believe it's 10 to 1, but it's, it's on our calendar. And I haven't heard they, it sounds like they're going to do some clinics for COVID boosters, but I haven't heard if they're planning to do those around the county or if the Health Department's going to do, do them at their typical large centers, so.
The clinic carries for shots, I assume?
Sorry?
The clinic carries for shots or?
Yeah. Great, thank you guys.
Thank you, Christian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Put this up here. Can I give you your monthly financial update? And it's a little weird, as you know, at the beginning of the fiscal year, you don't have a whole lot to report on the current year. I do want to just run through the normal pattern of things. First, I want to talk a little bit about your cash on hand. So right now we have just under $9.1 million, which is about $1.2 million more than we had last year at this time. And then the graph that we show here is just to show you how the funds are managed. And again, the, the goal is to have no more than 10% in the operational account. Right now we have 8.6% in that, in that checking account. And I will point out that these are unreconciled numbers. So Teresa has not gone through and reconciled the bank statements, but these are just directly from, from the statements that we printed off this morning. I do want to talk a little bit about fiscal 21 year-end numbers, because I know y'all are pretty anxious to know how we ended up. Our revenues, as I've been saying for the past few months, have been incredible. I want to point out, so your local government sales tax, we're going to finish the year about $465,000 in excess of what we budgeted. And that represents an increase of over $320,000 versus fiscal 20. So significant increase in the local government sales tax. Real estate transfer tax, we received $481,000 in excess of what was budgeted and about $480,000 more than we received in the prior fiscal year. So again, really good returns there. Occupancy tax, $580,000 over budget and about $660,000 more than we collected last year. And then permits and fees, I mean, we're talking, it, it's a smaller number, but it's still worth talking about. So $64,000 over what was budgeted and $57,000 more than last year. So when you hear Mr. Heard talking about the permit activity that his department and particularly, you know, it's a lot of that gets on to Steve to get out and do the inspections. That's where you're seeing this, this revenue. So it's, it's good to be able to have to expand your graph. So you're having more than 100%. So you're looking at 229% of budget for real estate transfer tax. Just, just incredible. And I will stand here and tell you, don't plan on having that kind of year every year. You know, numbers are really good and I don't believe that they're going to trail off much, but you had an incredible year in fiscal 21. So what's it mean? Well, it really, it's, it's going to mean that your fund balance is going to increase, unassigned fund balance is going to increase by a little over a million dollars. So again, really tight control over expenditures and having revenues that far exceeded what were, what was budgeted. We're able to add a little over a million dollars to fund balance. So we'll be about $6.7 million in unassigned fund balance. These numbers are going to be still a little bit more fine-tuning in the, in like the three to four digit range. So not, not talking about hundreds of thousands, you know, fives of thousands, sixes of thousands. So Teresa is still, still fine-tuning them. You know that your financial policies, we have a policy that says that we're going to target 75% unassigned fund balance. So 75% of expenditures after you remove the expenditure for beach nourishment debt service. So it's 75% is the target. With that addition of that over a million dollars going into fund balance, you should see a fund balance, unassigned fund balance percentage of just under 85%.
Wow.
Yes, and, yes, wow, and. Understand that it, the percentage is, is mathematical. So when your expenditures go up and your fund balance remains the same, the percentage goes down. So it's kind of, it's kind of a moving number, but the, the good news is at least when we finish off fiscal 21, we will be over, over the target, which is much better than being under the target. So you know, you have 75% is where you say you're comfortable. 50% was the floor. If we have 50% fund balance for more than two years, we need to go ahead and, and start budgeting for recovery. So very strong, very, very strong year. Don't pay any attention to this graph. It really doesn't mean anything. Cause again, so we have a month's worth of, of data in here really, and you, you can't really see that the bar is moving yet. But I can tell you that there are no great surprises yet this year. So we're two months into the fiscal year and everything is going as planned. Included in the revenue this year is the, the first round of the ARP funding. So that's around $63,000 in round numbers. And then Teresa and, and our, and the folks from our accounting firm that does the audit will be coming in and talking to you about the final numbers, including the beach nourishment fund. And that, that also has grown. So really strong financial picture for the town of Duck. And that's just been good stewardship on, on your part, good, good planning and good budgeting in fiscal 21 and just an economy that nobody could have predicted. So a lot of, a lot of good factors and it's all worked in our favor. Knock on wood, we'll, we'll keep on going with that. Again, really, so you can just see how, and this, this is a 13-month graph, revenue and expenditure. So you can see that this July is like last July. So we end up with, with a lot of money going out and not a whole lot coming in in July. And that's just very typical for this time of year. I've already shared the happiest news I have in the Terms of Finance earlier in the meeting by introducing Jessica. So I'm going to let her get her feet under and eventually she'll be standing up here making these financial presentations to you, but
Sounds good.
We're going to, we're going to, we're going to work her into that, work her into that slowly. Cause I know how much y'all like to hear from me directly. Well, a couple more things. So today we closed on the rate modification loan with BB&amp;T. If you recall, that's the, we're reducing the interest rate from 3.21 to 1.25%. It's going to save ballpark about 30 grand over the remaining life of the loan. So thank you for letting us do that. And then we should close on the installment finance loan with PNC. That's to buy the police cars and the radios. That should close sometime this week. I do want to give a kudos to Mr. Hobbs and his firm for all the work doing, reviewing the documents and getting attorney's opinions turned around and for tolerating my lack of patience and trying to get all, all that information in. But it all, it all pulled together. It's, it's, it's a little bit of a juggling act trying to get two of these to close within a couple of days, but very fortunate to have, have good, good counsel. Happy to answer any questions you might have about the financial picture or anything else. I'm very fortunate to have
I have another
One more point, one personal privilege if I can. So I, I don't have to stand up here and talk for a real long time, thankfully, because of the people that got up here and talked before me. So the department directors that we have here, as you can see, they're very busy and they're very competent people. And I don't need to make the reports for them because they do a fantastic job of bringing you up to speed. So thank you, Christian, Joe, Donna, Missy, Jeff. But, but thank you.
I have, I have an interesting question for you, Drew. And it's kind of in more into the future, but how long will we carry the double debt load of FEMA loan until reimbursement for beach nourishment and the actual start of payments for beach nourishment? How long do you, I mean, maybe that's in our longer range plan, but so how long are we going to have to carry that double debt load?
So the, the plan for that is that it should be, it should be a one year. So it's, it's really going to be a one-year, one-year bond. And then we'll have the opportunity, if we have not been reimbursed by FEMA and by the state, and you all know that the state tends to be the, the lag, FEMA the lead. We'll have an opportunity at the end of that first year period, and Andrew and Doug will, will advise us on this, to go and replace a special obligation bond for an additional year. Or we'll look at our cash balance and if we can satisfy the remaining out of, out of cash balance for whatever reason in the beach nourishment fund, we'll do that. So that's, it's a, that's a year-to-year, it's a year-to-year decision. So it, we're not issuing those bonds, we're not placing those bonds for the full five-year periods. It's one year at a time. I, I will be shocked if we can get reimbursed from FEMA and the state within that 12-month period. I'll be shocked. And I think Mr. Heard can probably attest to that too. It's just, and you all know, I mean, FEMA is quicker, but I, I've seen the state take as much as 24 months or more.
Kind of as a follow-on, an extension to that, the brick project, which will also be funded by FEMA, which will come at the end of that project, is that also going to add to our debt load problem in the short term?
We will, well, based on the financial picture that I just presented, we'll be able to front, front and reimburse ourselves. So we'll be able to front, pay for that without issuing debt. We don't, we don't plan to issue any debt for that project.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Richard?
I just, I think I'm, I think that fund balance percentage, granted it's, is hinged on our
And of course, the bigger, the better number to really focus on also is that, is the total dollars. Because that's, when it comes to having to write a check when we need to in an emergency, that's, that's critical.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Going at item number 10, the mayor's agenda. I have a few items continue on a monthly basis. In fact, we have one tomorrow morning at 8:30. As we all know, the COVID-19 number of cases continues to escalate, and I think the last four weeks have been, you know, in the 200s and are now at 259 cases from last week. Do not know what discussion will be like tomorrow with the county and the other mayors. But today, well, as of yesterday, I guess, the governor extended his declaration of emergency for 90 days, and the county and the town are following suit. So we're extending our declaration of independence of emergency through November 29th, I believe, correct, Drew? So, but if there's anything that's substantial that comes out of tomorrow's meeting, I'll certainly correspond with counsel. It's going to be a very active next couple of weeks for the league board. We have a board meeting on the 19th and, 16th and 17th, which has gotten changed from a different place to a Zoom meeting. So I'll be attending that, and perhaps Drew from vacation might even want to sign in.
I'm going to say no on that.
Take a day.
But I'll cover for you, Drew, don't worry. Along with that comes a finance committee meeting on the 13th and executive committee on the 6th. So it's going to be kind of busy over the next couple of weeks with the, with the regular board. Also, the NC Local Leadership Forum, which I preside over, we have a special meeting coming up on the 7th. We're working on a strategic plan, and you know, this is obviously a foundation to raise grant money for education and economic development. So that's, that's taking quite a bit of time. Looking forward to candidate orientation. I think that's a great idea that Drew is bringing forward to us, and I think it'll be good for all the candidates running for office. And obviously, the League of Women Voters, that it's now going to be a Zoom meeting, and you know, those are always exciting. Personally disappointed that we're canceling the Jazz Festival, but certainly understand why. So go into next year, hopefully, and have a July 4th parade and a Jazz Festival. Over the last couple of days, we've gotten a lot of public input. We had one tonight read to us, as well as all the other property owners on the trash services. As I've been able to, I've responded to the individuals, and I look forward to having that discussion with more information at our October meeting, where we can take a look at the pilot program and see what we do moving forward. And other than that, just to congratulate Jessica for joining us, and obviously Jake Dempsey for being promoted in our new three firefighters, Greg and Aaron and Dave. And with that, that's all I have this evening. We'll move on to item number 11, council members' agenda, starting with our Mayor Portem, Monica.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to reiterate that I'm looking forward to the, appreciate all the input on the trash schedule that we've received from the community as of late. I look forward to getting more details on and hearing the, what the, what, you know, what we can talk about in October. So please stay tuned for that conversation that we will have in our October meeting. I received another public comment or direct comment, I guess you could say, from someone who was sad about the Jazz Festival, as we all are. And looking ahead to 2022 for the Jazz Festival, it might be something to think about that we may be in the same position that we're in now with masks and vaccinations and such. So just putting it on the radar that, well, this person's suggestion, and I really can't get my head around it exactly, but it's just something for folks to think about is limiting the, coming up with a plan to require everyone in attendance to be vaccinated, perhaps, or and sort of restrict access in some ways. I mean, it just seems really hard to fathom based on how fluid everybody was moving around. But, you know, we may, it's disappointing to have to cancel. And if we are faced with, with this COVID situation lasting another year, which is just hard for anybody to even think about, it, you know, could very well, it could very well be that we could come up with something, you know, certainly other venues you've seen that, you know, are requiring this now. And anyway, I, I just, just something to think about, because there's so much logistics involved in that. I'm not trying to put any more on the staff, but just something to, just to think about. And then I'm really excited about the VHB study. It's even more detailed than I was envisioning with what we, you know, initially. So thank you for allowing, getting us from last month's meeting to the point where we are now with, thank you, and thank VHB. And I mean, that was just lightning speed, I think, to get that assembled, thanks to volunteers that, that sat out there in that heat and did the hard work there. I mean, I'm very, very excited about what we might find, and I think the community at large, beyond Duck even, will be interested in what's found. To that end, and even, maybe even helping with the brick project, if we ever get to that point, I was thinking that we could maybe look at, I don't know what I'm talking about here, so this, again, just an idea of, very general idea of putting, you know, traffic cameras in Duck that are sort of like the ones you see in DOT on the heavy areas like the bridge and stuff, that would be captured pictures, live streamed, that would just be a public service all the time. Because if someone was living, you know, north and could look at a quick camera and say, oh, I'm not going out right now, I mean, it might help a little bit. So educationally, you know, the technology's getting so good that maybe that would be something we could look at. Again, just thinking out loud here and just wanted to mention it. And again, I can't thank the staff enough, you know, our public safety officers, our new employees. It's really exciting to see the town doing so much with such an efficient staff. And we're very, very lucky, I feel, to have everybody here working with us and working as hard and proactively as everyone does. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Monica. Councilmember Rob?
At the, at the risk of sounding redundant after what Donna and Monica said, please, everybody think hard about this trash collection thing, because I want to be able to go home at night and not looking over my shoulder.
I know, trash is touchy.
Apparently very touchy, man, and sadly, so that's it, that's all I've got.
Thanks for having me. Councilmember Sandy?
With that, I'm not going to say anything.
Councilmember Nancy?
I wanted to, I wanted to just bring up quickly and just put in a word again about, you were all copied on a number of emails about this homeowners association representation. You know, we've gotten a fair, I think since our last meeting, we've gotten a fair amount of email on it. I had suggested that it was probably something that needs to get discussed at a retreat level. One of the concerns that I had was that it was going to cause exactly what we're seeing, which is some divisiveness between citizens and subdivisions. And they do represent me, they absolutely don't represent me, and that's absolutely, I think, what we don't want to have happening in the community. So, you know, I would just put out a word and a suggestion that trying to get to the bottom of what it is that's not working with all the different opportunities that we have for people to participate and either individually in their neighborhoods and then, you know, with the town, you know, is something, is the train going off the track somewhere? How can we improve? You know, how can, how can we make it better? How can we have, you know, a collaborative community without this kind of nonsense? You know, this just riffs and schisms starting to happen, which I think if we don't get our, I don't, I think if we don't get our arms around it, it's just going to get worse. So it's just food for thought. You know, I appreciate all the remarks and all the comments and all the emails, but I think we need to get, I think we really need to get an understanding of what it is that's going on and why it's causing so much strife. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Nancy. Monica, just back to a comment you made about the cameras. You know, we do have the NC DOT cameras out there, the ones that work at times, but it might not be a bad idea to tie those into our website if we could. You know, they have the major intersections coming up, 12, of course, 158 and the bridge, and they go up into Corolla, too. They obviously don't have any in town, but you know, there's one at Sea Oats and one at Hillcrest, and it might not be a bad idea, you know, pursuing what Monica was just talking about with cameras. People could access the website and pick up on the, on the traffic. Just an idea. All right, moving on to item number 12. Are there any additional public comments that anyone would like to make tonight? They're being done. Is there any other business to come before counsel this evening? They're being done. I'll remind counsel, next scheduled meeting will be the regular meeting on Wednesday, October 6th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Any discussion of motion on the floor? Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion is passed. The adjournment is adjourned.